Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant at Arms or designee has the front lobby been attended to ensure public access? Thank you. The school board meeting of November 1st, 2022 is now called to order. The time is 6:05. Prior to the start of this evening's meeting, we have been enjoying the music from South Fort Myers High School Wolf Pack Jazz Band. The Wolf Pack Jazz Band is under the direction of Mr. Tyler Crainer. The South Band will have their annual holiday concert on December 7th and will be participating in the Naples Christmas Parade. And I know it's not on here, but this band is a new band to us. And also, Mr. Crainer, I want to thank you. I hear that you are in the Army Reserves and that you actually play in their band. So I thank you for that. So we will listen to have another performance of from South Fort Myers High School. Thank you.
Thank you. That first piece was called Serengeti by Victor Orlando, released in 2008, so it's a little bit more modern. And it's just kind of a fun piece to get them out of the shell a little bit. They're going to do a lot of experimentation. And this one, we're going to go really classic. It's called Night Trainee, released in 1951. When I pulled it out, I simply said, "You'll probably recognize it because you've seen Back in the Future," right? Not a single one. That crapped up on the bass. So this is a great piece. That last tune featured Emmanuel on trombone and Tim up here on alto saxophone. This one's going to feature Alex on trumpet and Jesua on tenor saxophone. Enjoying Night Trainee.
Great job, guys. Great job. And thank you so much. And I know what you had to go through to get here this evening. We really appreciate it and hope to have you back in different circumstances. At this time, we will break for a moment so that we can have the pit cleared out. But again, thank you and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
This is my one. I think it's really odd that students don't adhere to form. So just thank you.
Okay, we are back at the meeting. I want to thank everybody who lent a hand to help South Fort Myers High School Jazz Band clear the pit. That's what teamwork is about. So I really appreciate that and thank you so much for doing that. At this time, we have taken the break. Everybody is gone, so we will go ahead and resume this meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Board member Ms. Kathleen Morgan will be participating and voting by phone this evening pursuant to Board Policy 1.11. Ms. Morgan, are you with us? Ms. Morgan, are you with us? Ms. Thomas, do we know if Ms. Morgan has joined us? Thank you. So we will find out about that. This evening's agenda includes invocation, pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements, recognitions, one item under information, public comments, consent, action items, which include three items under Board Office, two items under academic services, five items under business services, eight items under human resources, one item under information systems, four items under operations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as printed.
I'll second. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. So it has been moved by Ms. Vaughn and seconded by Ms. Gittens. And please record your vote. Okay, Ms. Morgan is with us right now, so it is 7-0. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Patricca will lead us in the invocation, after which Ms. Giavennelli will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Patricca, please lead us in the invocation.
Please stand. Please bow your heads in silent prayer or reflection. Ms. Giavennelli?
Stay standing, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Please be seated. The student representative who is not here, she will be here hopefully soon. Again, we have the traffic on the bridge, so it has taken a different toll this evening for all of us. So I'm still going to go ahead and read her bio. Tonight is Renee Bella, a member of Student District Advisory Council. She is a junior at Cape Coral High School and has just started the IB International Baccalaureate Program. Renee is the managing editor for her award-winning school newspaper. She is also an officer position in Model UN, treasurer of Class of 2024, student government, and vice president of both Theater Club and Dignity Closet. She is also active in honor societies such as National Honor Society and Rho Kappa. Renee is passionate about being involved in school extracurriculum as well as volunteering. She has volunteered in Dignity Closet, Cape Coral Animal Shelter, and Gulf Coast Village Independent Living. Renee is also a Cape Coral Youth Council member and works directly with council members. Her goal as a member is to have input on bettering the community. Renee's drive for attending tonight's meeting is to be more involved in what's going on in the world. She would like to have a better understanding of both business world and how to make a creative impact on everything she does. So when she does get here, hopefully she'll make it here, we will welcome her at that point in time. So thank you for indulging. So I'm going to go ahead and read Renee's portion of this, and that is the character word for November. "The quality of an individual's response to membership in a community." The design you see displayed on the screen was created by Erica Diaz, a 10th grade student at Mariner High School. And if whoever can turn off their cell phones, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Acknowledgements for the month of November 2022. The School Board of Lee County acknowledges the following events for the members of November 2022. National STEM STEAM Day, November 8th, 2022. National Education Support Professional Day, November 16th, 2022. Holocaust Education Week, November 7th through the 11th, 2022. School Psychology Awareness Week, November 7th through 11th, 2022. Veterans Appreciation Week, November 7th through 11th, 2022. American Education Week, November 14th through the 18th, 2022. Florida Family Engagement in Education Month, National American Indian Heritage Month. There's a lot going on this month. This evening's recognition is the American Heart Association Heart of Gold Award, and Ms. Fisher will be introducing that. And if the board members will please take your place in the pit for recognition, so I'd appreciate it.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Emily Cooper, the Southwest Florida Youth Market Director for the American Heart Association, along with some people who may not be here yet, Leslie Gunderson, principal of Pinewood Elementary. Oh, she is here. Okay. And Benjamin Osman, principal of Bay Shore Elementary. Please join me at the lectern. And in Mr. Osman's place tonight, we have A.J. Hamstra, Assistant Principal. Thank you for being with us. The School District of Lee County has been selected as a recipient of the 2022 Heart of Gold Award. Every year, the American Heart Association recognizes a lifetime of transformative contributions. With over 20,000 schools participating this past school year, the School District of Lee County was able to place fifth in the state of Florida and 18th in the United States. This is the first time the district has received this high ranking. Together, these 35 schools were able to raise $215,000 for life-saving research. We would like to recognize the following participating schools: Bay Shore Elementary, Bonita Springs Elementary, Calusa Elementary, Colonial Elementary, D Diplomat Elementary, Edgewood Academy, Edison Park Creative and Expressive Arts Magnet School, Fort Myers Beach Elementary, G Weaver Hips Elementary, Gulf Elementary, Hardens March, Marsh Elementary, Heights Elementary, J. Colen English Elementary Schools. Also Lexington Middle School, Manatee Elementary School, North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, Orangewood Elementary Schools, Patriot, Pelican, Pine Island, Pine Woods Elementary, Ray V. Podorf, River Hall, San Carlos Park, and Spring Creek Elementary Schools. And in continuation, Sunshine Elementary School, Tanglewood Elementary, The Alva School, The Sanibel School, Three Oaks Elementary School, Tice Elementary, Tortuga Preserve Elementary, Treeline Elementary, Tropic Isles Elementary, and Veterans Park Academy for the Arts. Because of the efforts from students and their families, along with the School District of Lee County faculty, our community is healthier and better off than we were the year before. One out of 100 children born in Lee County suffer congenital heart disease. With our American Heart Association programs, Lee County schools are truly making a difference in the heart health of the community. Special recognition is extended to the following schools for their top performance in the Kids' Heart Challenge Program. Pinewood's Elementary, Ms. Gunderson, Bay Shore Elementary, Mr. Hamstra, and Gulf Elementary School, which would be Ms. Verblau. The School District and the superintendent are pleased to accept this recognition on behalf of the School District of Lee County. And we have the certificate.
And I have one for each of the top schools over here as well, but the frame, I need to fix it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we have.
But if we could hold that one up and.
Will somebody want to come and hold this? Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Yes, okay. And then?
These are all the schools that are participating.
All the schools are named on this. So thank you so much, Emily. We appreciate this, and congratulations, Leslie and Mr. Hamstra.
Thank you.
Okay. So you want to come on over?
Sure.
And we'll shake hands with the board.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you.
Have you all, we're going to have you guys take a picture real quick before you go, before you go. Take a photo.
You can stay there, Mary.
A little bit. Ms. Vaughn is a little bit blocked. Scoot a little bit this way, then. Yep. A little bit. Ms. Vaughn, a little bit that way. No. Your other. Good, good. Say cheese. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Hurricane Ian Recovery Community Update. Dr. Bernier, can you please provide an update regarding Hurricane Ian and its aftermath?
Madam Chair, members of the board, gathered public, thank you for the opportunity to provide this presentation this evening. We are just waiting for it to go up on the board. There it is. The purpose again to remind everyone is to provide an update related to the reopening of schools and the recovery following Hurricane Ian. The agenda tonight will provide reopening of schools update, information on Hector Cafareta Elementary, as well as the Fort Myers Beach-Sanibel School, also some work that we're doing with the shelter recently opened in North Fort Myers, staff and student attendance figures, a finance and financial impact update, as well as some information on a recently held job fair. When you look at reopening our schools, all schools have returned to academic instruction at this time that can in their buildings, and those that cannot have been partnered with other school buildings. Today, we are pleased to welcome the families and students of Diplomat Lexington Middle School. Those students did return on November 1st. I wanted to stop here for a second, make a few remarks about Lexington and its reopening process. When I interviewed for this position, I promised all of you at this dais and this community that I would be honest. I never promised that I would be perfect. After reviewing our team's approach, I really believe, and I spent time this morning, almost three and a half hours talking to everybody on the first floor that I could find, I really believe we should have provided the Lexington teachers an additional day to help prepare their classrooms. While they were provided a reunification day early in the process at a high school in order to prepare for virtual learning, what they came into on Monday needed additional time for them to properly prepare their classrooms. And yet, somehow through their efforts, the efforts of our Maintenance Division and the efforts of our remediation contractor, and quite honestly, the help of their second and third floors, those teachers were ready to open school today. I'm accountable for the pace of reopening of schools, and though I'm extremely proud of the diligent work to get 86 out of our 88 buildings ready, the Lexington staff deserves my apology and could use another day to get their learning environments ready for students. I can't fix that error. I can only apologize for it, and I spent time this morning doing just the very same in each one of those classrooms. Additionally, there were areas that should have been cordoned off yesterday. Out of an abundance of caution, eight areas of the building in Lexington were cordoned off by this morning by the remediation contractor. We have additional air samples that were taken late last evening and delivered to the Tampa, not a dental hygienist, industrial hygienist available, and they are available tonight. I'm happy to report to this board that all rooms now at Lexington Middle School have cleared all of the checkpoints on our checklist to reopen. This is not unusual to separate specific areas or specific rooms in a building. We had to do some of that work at Diplomat. We had to do some of that work at Gulf Middle School, where we had to close the gym because we weren't ready to have that open. It didn't meet the safety requirement. And we had to do it at Fort Myers High regarding the auditorium. And come to find out, we may have been doing that about a previous problem, but samples are samples, and the safety of our faculty and our students is paramount. I made sure to go to Lexington today, as I said, to connect and listen and express my thoughts, and more importantly, to listen to the Lexington teachers and the parents I encountered. I appreciated their honesty and feedback. Some of it was, in a word, brutal, but it was also honest, and it was fair, and it allowed me to again think and recommit to ensuring that we take care not only of our students, but that we do the same for our teachers, support professionals as well. I'm grateful for their commitment to the students, because regardless of how their building looks, they are back, and they wanted to make sure they went back to an impacted school, to make sure they provided an environment for our students, for their parents, and for our community. Thursday, I'll head out to Diplomat to do the very same. Diplomat also opened very successfully today. I would like to remind everybody that our IAQ tests, our indoor air quality tests, are always available. We've opened that website. They're out there, and we will put the Lexington and Diplomat IAQs out there as soon as we have the final reports. What we always get is an initial report from the hygienist, and then we're able to move forward from there. I'd also like to remind everyone that we still have one school that we need to take care of in terms of their engagement and retrieving their personal items. We are currently involved with our new Chief Operations Officer, our temporary Chief Operations Officer, to set up the schedule for Fort Myers Beach Elementary. We are going to ask those teachers, in this particular case because of the condition of building, to make a list of what they would like to get back from their rooms, and then we will go in and we will secure those materials. Very different than what occurred in some of our other buildings, like at Cafareta, where the teachers actually did have access. So I wanted to make sure I provided that as a reopening of schools update. As to Fort Myers Beach and the Sanibel School, there are now a community of learners with their own teachers at San Carlos Elementary. Parent liaison committees are meeting with both of these schools weekly. We are doing that to ensure that we have open lines of communication with both Fort Myers Beach and the Sanibel School. After-school programs, which we heard were a bit of a crisis at the very beginning, are being implemented by the administration and staff. So our staff, who needed additional time for children both before and after school, are now getting some of that support. While not perfect, again, we are doing everything we can to provide our teachers the opportunity to return to work and know that their children are cared for both before and after school, not only for our teachers, but for our parents and their community. In terms of shelter support, we are working with currently the Del Toro Plaza Shelter, which opened on October 27. They have an emergency operations center. We're working with ours and theirs in collaboration to connect resources to approximately 87 students. I will tell you that 87 students are, I really should say, are children, not all are of school age. Student Services, Student Enrollment, and Transportation have been working to support these families and reconnect our students either to their original campus or to a new one. We are utilizing Island Coast and Fort Myers Mill Academy of the Arts, the K8 site, because they have room and enrollment, and we have bus stops and transportation nearby. As for Hector A. Cafareta, we are still working on a temporary campus. We'll be asking for a special meeting, and I thank the board members seated here with me today for granting me the opportunity to bring that as a singular item. Don't like to work outside of the regular scheduled board meetings, but it was physically impossible to work through the procurement process and get that agenda today even as a good cause item. So thank you for your listening last week. They also have a parent liaison committee. We are also meeting with them weekly. And last time we met, which was last week, they had over 250 people in attendance, and would like to thank the staff who set that up, but also Rosario, who did all the translating for us, about four to five sentences at a time. Really important in a community when you're speaking to them, that they understand what you're trying to relay. Hector still suffers the challenge of being split campus between Hancock Elementary School and Pelican Elementary School, and I will be bringing forth a recommendation for a portable campus to the board this coming Friday night, which could locate them behind Cape Coral Tech in the time necessary to allow us the opportunity to plan for the future of that school building. Student staff data, I've shared this daily with the board members, but for the staff and for the community, I want you to know that we're still hovering at about 83, 92, and 92%. That means we're down to about 83% of our students attending. As we've opened more schools, we found more students impacted by this hurricane, and we will continue to work with them and their families to get them a safe transition back to school. Our TALCA attendance still is above 90%, and our SPALCA attendance is as well. I did get a question from a board member today that requires good clarification on this data. This is 100% of our teachers who should be at work. That's what this percentage is based on. This does not include current vacancies that we may have in that area. We are specifically reporting on the number of staff, the number of support professionals that are here, based upon they're currently being employed with our school district. Attendance is approaching. There have been several questions for me regarding what we're doing to approach attendance and when are we going to make the shift. Schools, social workers are conducting home visits. They are ensuring that students, families, and other individuals have all that they need to bring their students back. Our parents have been surprised by the level of support this district through its board leadership and others have been able to provide them in terms of school supplies, uniforms, and the other necessary materials for a student who has lost just about everything to return to a normal process without being seen as an outlier or not having the correct supplies or clothing. There's been targeted communication to our families and students. We are working with the Florida Department of Education's Homeless Liaison to connect with all homeless liaisons around the state. We are working with the Florida Department of Education on a single sign-on website to determine if a student has enrolled in another school across the state. We continue to be diligent about our students, and we will continue to track them down. We will be using the week of the 14th, that's the week before Thanksgiving, as a test week for student attendance. What a test week means is we'll be using that opportunity to turn back on our robo-call systems for students who are absent. So if a parent in Pennsylvania has a student who's supposed to be at a middle school, they will begin to get phone calls during that week. This is just a test process to alert them that we need to get them back, or they need to make a decision about where their child will enroll. We will use the Thanksgiving holiday as an additional week for those families to transfer, and then beginning on November 28th, that's the first Monday coming back from vacation, that's when we will reinstitute our mandatory attendance rules regarding students. Financial update. Preliminary damage assessment has been submitted to the Department of Education. This was an early estimate, and it's different than the last time we presented here at a board meeting and a board workshop. When we last saw this figure, it was $150 million. We are still getting additional assessments. We are getting additional understanding of what current contractor prices include, and that figure has risen, and we have submitted to the Department of Education today. We expect our area of damage to be right around $230 million, and I think it's $61,000. That's where we currently are as a damage estimate, and we are continuing to figure out how we're going to recover, and we're trying to strategically plan for that recovery. On a good note, we also have some great information to share regarding our vendor fair, I'm sorry, our SLD recruitment fair. We held on October, this was held on October 27th. We had the opportunity to meet and apply and meet our candidates who came in. We actually found someone who wanted to be a teacher. They were completely certified, they were sitting at home, and they wanted to give back. We collected two instructional support individuals. We picked up six additional guest teachers. Food and Nutrition Services picked up 12, and we have five who've requested to become members of our Transportation Department, and we are currently working through their motor vehicle records to see whether they're still eligible. We did have 102 people attend, and those are our numbers of the people who came out. I would like to remind everyone, also, it's not in the report, but I'd like to remind everybody that our vendor fair is this coming Friday. That is an opportunity for our people who want to work for the school district through our bidding process and take part in rebuilding our school buildings and rebuilding our community related to the schools, to come participate, find out about the bidding process, find out how this process works, and make sure that they are updated and know how to proceed as jobs begin to move out onto the street for them to help us with the recovery. Those are our updates at this point. I'm open to any board discussion and questions.
Thank you so much for the update. That's really important to all of us, as well as to the public to receive this, so I really appreciate that. At this time, is there anyone, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes, I just want to say that this afternoon, I had an opportunity to read some notes from some kids at a middle school who are grateful that they're back to school. They were going crazy at home. They were bored, and they were so happy to reconnect with their teachers and their friends at school because they need that stability, and they're happy to be having something to do. So I just want to thank Dr. Bernier for this update, and he and all of his staff for going above and beyond with the recent challenges and getting our kids back in school and giving them that feeling of normalcy. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Patricca?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for acknowledging the extra day for teachers. I really appreciate that. I did go in to Lexington yesterday, and I expected it to be ugly, and I definitely got what I expected. I don't really think, I mean, I shouldn't make generalizations, but I don't really think middle school kids care about how pretty the building is. I know parents probably care a little bit more. I was just not expecting the amount of work those teachers had to do that day. So I'm really, really glad that you acknowledged that. Thank you. Could you, if I may, through the chair, ask, could you explain why Cafareta first on Friday? Like, what's the sense of urgency with regard to Cafareta? I know, but the public might want to know.
I think it's a great question. I think the community needs to understand that while Sanibel, Sanibel's in a situation where we've got reports back from the Sanibel campus that it is structurally sound, so we're doing the remediation process, and while they're embedded at San Carlos, they will have a home to go back to. We do not yet have the same structural conclusions related to Fort Myers Beach Elementary. There's an additional aspect to Fort Myers Beach Elementary being a historical site, which is further complicating that matter. With Hector, there's two things. They do not have a building to go back to at this time, and they are currently split because they are so large, there are 750 students. They are currently split into the primary grades, K-1, 2, and then the intermediate grades at another site for 3, 4, 5. It was the best solution we had. Again, when you try to do what's best for children, it's not Again, when you try to do what's best for children, it's not something that a superintendent and his staff would come up with as the primary plan to educate children. So getting them a modular campus where they can exist as a unit and families don't have to be driving to two different schools would be, I believe, the proper approach moving forward.
Great, I appreciate that. And then we did receive an email regarding the dump, I guess is what you would call it, behind Lexington and concerns about safety there. Are you in a position to address that?
I can. There is a large site for where debris is being deposited. It is across the fence and not on our property. That property is owned by the county. I have spoken with EOC leadership. We have a great member of our team deeply embedded with them as well. They're doing their very best, but it was the best site they had at the time in order to store things, we believe, and I honestly can say. Our students don't go over to that area. It is normally was a set of soccer fields, an open recreational facilities for the community, and we are divided by a fence and a road, and all of our students really operate, if they go in any other direction, that they technically go opposite of that direction to their play fields, their building too, and their gymnasium.
Great, I appreciate that. It's not, I don't consider it an attractive nuisance because it's middle schoolers. If we were talking elementary kids, it might be a bigger issue, but you can tell a middle schooler not to go there, and like you said, there's a fence. And then my last one is really a comment, and I say this every single time you update us about these numbers, I'm just, it is the thing that keeps me up at night, and the variations in numbers have been quite large, and I know you're working to get us accurate information, and I know that you can't give us what you don't have, so I acknowledge that, but at the same time, I have to say how, just how uncomfortable it makes me.
I have to agree with you. We started initially with an idea that this could be a magnitude of at least 10, and we were using a very high predictor of $500 million. I believe in under-promising and over-delivering. We are definitely going to be under that $500 million mark, but these numbers are much more accurate than the original estimates that Amy, that, sorry, Dr. Decimore's provided the other day. That was a adjuster total that was provided to us, and I would caution everyone who is working with an insurance adjuster, you know this better than all of us. They do not work for the school district. They work for their insurance company. So their estimates are being reviewed by our construction, our facilities department. We're looking at what it currently costs to do some of the work that they're estimating, and our costs are higher than that. I'll do a simple mathematics. I know of an individual I spoke to just a few days ago who has a cost estimate for the replacement of their roof of $20,000. Their insurance adjuster came to visit, and they offered him $4,000. So now the question is, what do I do? What we do is we validate those figures. We continue to make sure that we're paying real costs, and I suspect that you will only see those numbers rise. How much more, I can't really tell you at this point, but I know that number to be submitted to the state. We talked to the state on Friday and again on Monday prior to us submitting the report, and they are very, very aware that all the school districts are putting in what they call an early estimate of the costs. That has to do with the budgetary cycle in Tallahassee. They're trying to get prepared for the legislators because some decisions are already currently being made regarding future legislation, et cetera, and they wanted to get an idea from all of the school districts as to where we were. As superintendents, we have convened and talked individually that we think it's still a little too early, but that's what they wanted, and we will comport with what they're asking for because it does give us the best opportunity for the state legislature and our local delegation to know. And again, I remind everybody, our local delegation has been out and toured our buildings.
Last question. Last time we spoke, I asked whether the 50 percent rule applies. I don't know whether you have that answer. If not, board update is fine.
We do not have that answer at this time, but we have also asked our own legal department as well as the State Department of Education to weigh in on that issue. And do you want me to re-explain that to the public, what we're discussing?
Sure.
So homes built before 1980, if they suffer more than 50 percent damage, there is a Florida law now that requires that homeowner to rebuild their home post-hurricane. The question is whether that applies to school buildings. I was told on Wednesday in our DOE call, that was a very good question. So it is a transitional and developmental process for them as well. They are investigating that. They're coming back with their legal opinion, and I've put them in touch with our general counsel as well and her team, who are doing some independent research on our behalf.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Kittens, and then Ms. Javonelli.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation about the staff and student data. My question with that is, because we have lost students returning, do you envision that we may get kind of closer to a balance of the student-staff ratio? Or are we, you know, are we losing, have we lost staff or losing staff that it still becomes an issue?
Currently, I've not had as much opportunity to walk buildings as I usually do to look at staff ratios. I've shared with all of you in the past, the first thing I do is go in and count heads. It's just something, as a former principal, I always did, and looked at how many teachers we had in place. I'll have to get back to you on staff ratios. We shared at the last work session that we are getting some information, not only about the number of kids who are officially withdrawing, which was, at that time, was approximately 700 and change, but we're also receiving additional students. We are getting 500-plus that are new students to the community who are joining us at the same time. For instance, in Lexington this morning, I walked through the main office, I shook a man's hand, young man's hand, and said, "How are you?" And he said, "I'm brand-new." I said, "It doesn't always look like this. We'll make it better." And he smiled, and he said, "I understand that there was a big storm here." That's as much he knew about what had transpired. So we are getting new students at the same time. And again, I remind everyone that October FTE, they went back to a date certain for us, September 11th through September 26th. So we're being financed going into the fall through the FTE process based upon our student enrollment at that time. Schools are due to submit their FTEs on the 9th. They will look, the budget and finance department will look them on the 10th and 11th, and then we have the week before Thanksgiving to make the correction and submit long before the September 15 deadline for the state of December, December 15th.
And you reminded me of something too with the calendar committee about the FTE, that in our discussion at the last meeting, we expanded the days on the calendar for FTE because it's more than just that six-day period. It is a week or so ahead of time that you have to be at school at least one day during the period before. So that was why that was added, and I'm sure the calendar update will be brought up as well. I had a question too about the landfill at Lexington. When I drove in there, it just seemed overpowering. Is there any way that the city might even be able to put up some type of a barrier or fence or something?
We've actually been engaged in ongoing conversations with members of the EOC and the county. It is a county site. They are doing everything they can to try to figure out what to do and where to move it to. Their options are limited. They understand where it is. They've heard from us. It would be a county decision as to whether they move that site or not.
Okay, thank you. Is that it? Ms. Kittens? Okay, thank you. Ms. Javonelli?
Thank you. My question is regarding back to the 50 percent rule. The year 1980, that would only, would that only apply to the Fort Myers High School? I meant Fort Myers High, Fort Myers Beach School? That one's older than 1980, but what about, what other schools would that apply, even apply to?
The only one that it would apply to in our current situation would be Fort Myers Beach Elementary.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But that is again further complemented by its historic designation.
Right, right. So I was curious, I would like to see the preliminary damage assessment report that went to DOE. I'd like to review that, if I could get a copy of that. And then my, one of my other concerns, when you were talking about the $230 million, and obviously that could change. I remember back in Hurricane Charlie where we had a drywall shortage, and then it went into a whole nother aspect of defective drywall. And my concern is, obviously, we already have shortages, so I anticipate possible shortages and delays and then rising costs. And then we're already having that as it is before the, before the storms. So I just kind of wanted to actually just kind of reiterate that, that $230 million could be a lot more, and I mean, I am concerned, as Ms. Petrika just, it keeps her up at night, I understand. So I would just be curious about that, you know, how we can tighten that up if we can, but.
I completely understand where you're coming from. Let me begin with the first request. The Florida Department of Education Division of Finance and Operations. Hurricane Ian, estimated damage survey will be provided to you in the board update. You'll get your own official copy of it. It's a very simple form. It was meant to be easy for districts to fill out. I would assume that it will generate additional questions, and we will respond to those questions. As to the second issue, things are getting more expensive, and I will tell you, anybody who's renovated a home knows that when you start to take a wall down and start to look what's behind it, you will find consistent damage or additional damage that you did not expect to find. So there, this is, and I get our board members' concern related to, I'd love to put a figure on it and say, "That is the dollar figure. We just can't yet." And it's something that keeps me up at night, that including Dr. Decimore's presentation on abatements, which is the delay in paying your taxes, as well as the information related to a house out on the beach or a house in a lot, was so much value regarding the tax rolls. And now if it's just an empty lot and the person owns it, their tax bill is significantly reduced, therefore, the amount of money that we would receive is significantly less. We have kind of all arrows pointed inward currently, and we have to do the very best to circle our wagons and do our best to move forward, and not just with additional bills, but potentially with less income.
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Oh, we have a question from Ms. Renee. Go ahead.
So I was just, had a question about with, I know a lot of my classmates, they either are displaced in their homes or they lost their cars, and you were talking about, is there, how do I ask it? I guess, are buses being accommodated to reach other students, especially with attendance being more important within the coming weeks?
Our bus drivers are doing everything they can. I would remind, and you don't need a reminder of this, your friends talk to you often. Our bus transportation system was not perfect prior to Hurricane, and now when we talk about 80 or 90 percent of our bus drivers being back on any given day, we still have that gap in the number of employees. We're not reporting that gap of the number of people, the number of open positions we have. We're glad that at least five people came into the job fair to help. Every bus driver, anybody who can drive a bus would certainly help us, and I make this plea from the dais regularly. Right now, what we're asking students and families to do, if they want to remain at their school, is to get to the nearest bus stop, and we will accommodate them. So we are doing everything humanly possible to get them to school, to the school they were attending. Some students have had to make difficult decisions to transfer based on the fact that they used to live in the Cape and now they live far out east. So I mean, but that's a decision of a family to find secure housing and a secure environment for their children.
So there would be no rerouting of the bus stops? It's just making that decision?
At this time, there's no plan to reroute the bus stops, but I can certainly have a conversation with our Director of Transportation to see whether there are other opportunities to squeeze more lemon juice out of the lemon we have. I don't know how else to describe it to you.
No, it's difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a great question. Ms. Vaughn, did you have any?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. Just as a follow-up to Renee's question, so for kids who did not ride the bus before but drove cars to school, can they get on the bus? They just have to get to the nearest bus stop?
100 percent, yes.
Okay.
They still can get, if they drove before and they need to ride a bus, that bus is available for them.
Madam Chair, I believe Ms. Morgan is on the line.
Yeah, she's my next one. I have her. Ms. Morgan, do you have any comments or questions?
No. Thank you very much.
And seeing no other questions, thank you again, Dr. Bernier, for sharing that with us, and thank you, Everfix, the microphones and a sound system because it's fabulous.
It is unbelievable.
I feel like she's right with us, so thank you for that. And we will, did you have any other comments to share?
No, just that in the, in between, if I may, just to take as personal privilege, Mr. Ramirez and I noticed the improvement as well from our interviews. So kudos to the communications team. And everybody wants to know how you did, how we did it. This board approved a purchase order to improve the communication system. It's amazing what you can do when you have a little bit of money to purchase the equipment to make it, you know, a first-class system for all of you as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, and thank you, Mr. Ramirez, for assisting on this as well. So our next topic on the agenda is public comments. So Mr. Priya Bruna, would you please address the item of public comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in and will be made from the podium in the front of the center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Abusive language is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper during the public comment time is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. We will take recesses as necessary if there's not decorum. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time for speakers, three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call you five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction. Madam Chair, there are four speakers that wish to address the board this evening. That is three minutes per speaker.
Thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with staff up front. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a comment card? Please raise your hand. Is there anyone, I'm going to repeat it, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a comment card? Seeing none, Mr. Priya Bruna, will you go ahead and proceed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Will the following individuals please line up? Sharon McGill, Edward Drath, Lou Navarro, Amy Burke. May I, if you would just line up behind that gentleman?
Ms. Burke? Yeah, and, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Sharon McGill, good evening, everyone.
Ms. McGill, could you wait, there you go, your timer's up now.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say again, Dr. Bernier, how impressed I have been with you and your team, who's in the audience here tonight, and anybody who may be listening. The fact that you are making every effort to make sure no child is left behind in this horrific situation is just amazing, and it's appreciated and noted by the community. Next, I was able to watch the presentation this afternoon by Ms. Messenger on the food services, and some questions came to mind while I was watching, and most of those had to do with the DoD and our vendors associated with the DoD, and who are our local vendors that are part of the DoD program? And what happens if we don't use that vendor? Do we then lose those DoD commitments to, you know, help us financially? And would we have to pay out of pocket, out of our own budget for those funds? So it's just, the word transparency comes up here a lot, and that's what I was just wondering, transparency, who the vendors are that we're using for those products. And last, I just want to say thank you to the board members who will be stepping down. Your- Your compassion, your commitment is noted. And you, you're, what you put into this goes so far beyond what your job description is. And the fact that you're mentors to individual children and you're out there in the community as a liaison, that you're out there in the schools all the time. And people see that and note it. And it's your passion that's helped make this district what it is now. And know that when you're stepping down, you were part of the team that hired him. And you're leaving the district in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Dr. Edward Drath. Good evening, board members, Dr. Bernier, and district staff. I want to commend all of you for your tremendous effort and achievement in restoring the district to functionality quickly and efficiently and in the wake of Hurricane Ian. After the learning loss experience during the COVID lockdown, the students did not need more lost classroom time. This will be the next of the last board meeting before some board members will be replaced. I want to thank all members for the time, effort, and commitment invested over your terms in office. As you know, my relationship with the board and several members in particular has at times been contentious. I believe some of you were misguided or misled. Others chose liberal politics and ideologies over what was right. School mask mandates, school vaccinations, CRT, LGBTQ, transgender, and banned book issues will long be remembered. We have been on opposite sides of the spectrum on major issues. I do not hold you in disregard because of this. Our differences have motivated me to work tirelessly to bring this board into a more conservative alignment. And next Tuesday, we'll show if those efforts have been successful. For those members who continue in their seats, I sincerely request that you work with the new board members in a spirit of unity and the common goal of making this school district the best in the state. You can, if you choose, work toward an end which will show me and members of the voting public that you have changed your views on issues of particular interest to all of us. Politics and ideology have no place on the school board. This, the dissension that they cause only wastes time, money, and disrupts the harmony of the education system and negatively affects the quality of the learning experience. Your job performance is judged solely on the quality of education of our students. I would ask you, the departing members, to please remain in public service of some form. Your experience and commitment will be valuable. You can help this community and the Lee County School District continue to improve to a level of excellence we all wish to see it achieve. I wish you all well and look forward to an improved education system in Lee County in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
My new look? Good after, good evening, Superintendent, board members, Lou Navarro, retired teacher. I wanted to hope that I get some answers to my few points tonight. And first of all, I wanted to ask about public records because that one gentleman comes up here and he complained. And public records is not doing well. I agree with him. I may not agree with some of the things he says or all of them, but he's correct. I'm hoping you're going to look into this. It's been downhill for quite some time and I don't want to say it's a cover-up, okay? Next, I guess the honeymoon's over, Dr. B. I think you erred opening these schools too soon. I've talked to students, et cetera. I don't know what the rush was. In fact, I don't know why you couldn't go to virtual school till every school's fixed and not put children and teachers in harm's way. I really feel like you erred there and you need to look at it. And I've got documentation where in 2020, when we were locked down with COVID, the students did 49% on the FSA. And when we were back in 2021, it's 48. And I know why, but I don't want to waste the rest of my time, maybe later. Well, the troublemakers weren't there, that's why. COVID, I'm concerned about the students and the faculty. Nightmare COVID mutation found in Florida, trippledemic warnings issued. Fort Myers news press, read it, it was yesterday, and kids are getting ill. I know. Number four, I don't, you know, I don't think we need to have these children in harm's way or the teachers. But, number five, how many administrators volunteered out of the county office to substitute? I've got the records here, you're out 200, 300 teachers a day. You are putting in unqualified teachers because you can't get them and you don't want to pay them my $60,000 recommendation. You know, you're all sitting there doing good. What about the teachers and the students? No one talks about their education. They talk about LGBTQ and all this other stuff. Shame on you.
Want to hear from you, Dr. B?
Thank you, Mr. Navarro.
The honeymoon's over, my friend. Don't look so upset.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Amy Burke. I have two kids in the South Zone and my issue was transportation. I understand that the buses are shorthanded, but I have an elementary schooler that has been late to school an hour all last week, this week, this week so far. Her bus was actually only 30 minutes late this morning. We had this issue before the hurricane also. In the afternoon, I've been told twice, over an hour after school got out, that there was no bus coming to the school to even pick her up. To me, this is unacceptable, especially for an elementary schooler. The other thing is, when you call transportation and you call the South Zone, they either don't know what they're doing or they give you a runaround. I had one morning where they told me the bus was going to be there at 8:00 and it showed up at 7:45. And I called the school and they said that the bus had already gone by there. I had been standing out at the bus stop several times. And we go out there early because I follow the transportation app. And on some mornings, the transportation app isn't even up to date. This afternoon, my son goes to Lexington. Today was his first day back. He was told this afternoon, when he got out of school, that his bus was given to Cypress Middle School instead of Lexington. And he did not get home for over an hour after school got out. And my question is, is there anything that can be done? I know that there's shortage of bus drivers and everything, but it's hard for an elementary schooler to be stuck at her school for two hours some days in the afternoon or waiting an hour at her bus stop in the mornings. I'm a parent that doesn't drive, so I rely heavily on the bus transportation. So that is my question, if anything can be done or, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, this concludes public comments for this evening.
Thank you. I really want to, I appreciate each and every one of you who came up and spoke today. We are here to hear what you have to say and do appreciate you coming forward with that. I guess I'm going to start with, and I know we keep, we've spoken about the transportation and we know that there's, we're still working on trying to make sure that we get each and every child, we get them on a time, timely fashion. I know my grandchildren ride the bus as well, so we've been waiting for hours on them as well. And fortunately enough, we have other people that can participate and help with that because we do understand what is taking place here. I don't know, Dr. Bernier, if you, do you want to?
What I would recommend at this point, I'll have a member of my staff, get Ms. Burke's phone number. I'll have staff from my office reach out and then we'll can, we'll work with transportation as well. But I will share with all of you, prior to the hurricane, we had begun to have this discussion. The solution to our transportation issue is our level of choice that we transport. I believe, as a superintendent, in a family's right to choose schools. But we also have to be cognizant of the fact that we cannot afford to transport all of that choice. As soon as we can, I guess I'll say, as soon as we can, I would like to get back out into the community to pick up where we left off with the town halls, moving to those community dialogues so we can talk about proximity plan. Because there will need to be a decision made this coming winter, January, February, in order to impact the transportation system for '23, '24. Without a decision and a change in our proximity plan, I do not believe the situation will get any better, especially as we add more schools and add more students. And each time we add new students and more schools, we add the amount of choice that we're offering and transporting. So I will make sure that a staff member gets with you tonight, gets your information, and then we contact you. And I will reach out to you personally. If Dr. Malloy is sitting in the back, he will make sure that he collects your contact information.
And I want to thank you for that because I know that has been a conversation that we have been having regarding choice and how much choice we have. And I know for, for instance, my grandchild goes from Astero all the way to Fort Myers. So that's part of the zone that they have. So with that, it does take a lot of effort to make sure that all the children are in a, to get them to and fro, you know, from the school. So thank you for sharing that. And I know we are working on that and we'll get back to, to the proximity. So thank you for that. Also, with the, the food service and the vendors, that was a question that was brought up. Dr. B, I don't know, Ms. Messenger's not here and that was part of our conversation today. Or Mr. Priya Bruno, do we have that, as far as the people who are part of that, can we send that, get with Ms. McGill and share that information? Because I don't have that on top of my head.
Madam Chair, neither do I. I would have to ask Ms. Messenger to respond to that. Again, if we could get one of our staff members to provide, to collect the information so they can respond back to that individual, we'll be happy to do so directly from the expert in our food service department, which is Ms. Messenger.
Perfect, thank you. And Mr. Navarro, thank you very much. Our public records, we're always trying to make that better. And thank you for bringing that to, back to our attention. And Dr. Drath, thank you for your comments. And I, we will go ahead and move forward. The next item on the, the next item is the consent action items. The documents for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the materials. And we have the opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business, tabled items portion of the agenda? Ms. Morgan? Ms. Morgan?
Oh, let me try again. I have none. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kittens?
I have none.
Ms. Vaughn?
None, thank you.
Thank you. And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda consent action items with, oh, is there a motion to approve the consent action items?
A move to approve the consent action item agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Motion by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Vaughn. Please record your vote. Okay, 7-0, motion carries.
Dr.?
Dr. Bernier, please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment that was approved under the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public, I am very pleased to announce the appointment of a new assistant principal to Gateway Elementary School. An individual is Tracy Lorenzini. Thank you, Tracy. Tracy, if you could please stand and be recognized. Again, board members, for all of you and for Tracy and her family, first of all, congratulations to the family. Take a good, hard look at her now. She is going to be very, very busy and you should be very proud of her. And I appreciate families coming out to help and support. And to Tracy, I think the biggest thing with assistant principal and principal positions, we all, we always talk about the level of trust that's been provided to you by that position. The young people in your care are incredibly important to their families in this community. And we know that you will do an excellent job and you will abide by that trust. And we appreciate you taking the step forward to, to, to working at Gateway Elementary. They're lucky to have you. Thank you.
Congratulations. And I see you brought your whole squad. That's great. Beautiful. Next on the, the agenda, we are, wow, we're already to board comments. So this evening, I'm just going to mix it up a little bit. And I'm going to start with Ms. Patrica.
Thank you.
Please.
If I may through the chair, ask, Dr. Bernier, have you considered sending out some messaging to parents this evening to let them know that we can expect significant delays due to the bridge closure?
I already have the communications team. I sent it to all of you. The comms team's working on it. The Florida Department of Transportation has closed what I am told is called the Kalusahatchie Bridge. I know that it has other names. It's the one that leads from Fort, North Fort Myers, right into the downtown area where you could get off and go, get right onto McGregor. That's the best this rookie's got for you. The Florida Department of Transportation has not put a timeframe on reopening that bridge. So we will get a parent messenger out. I know communication was sent out district-wide, but it's already gone. Denise is telling me it's already been sent.
Excellent, thank you. And I really hate it when misinformation sort of hangs out there after public comment. There was an indication that opening schools after the hurricane put children and teachers in harm's way. I couldn't disagree with that more. Every effort was made to create safe environments and if anything, ensuring that those environments were safe delayed the opening of schools. So I just really, in a fact-check kind of way, wanted to put that out there. I want to let my colleagues and the community know that Claws versus Jaws will occur Friday night. It is the big South County rivalry between Bonita Springs Bull Sharks Jaws versus Astero Wildcats Claws. And it is also a fundraiser for staff that have lost, you know, a lot in the hurricane for schools, all schools located in the Bonita-Astero area. I recommend that you come on out, have a good time, support not just our student athletes but our staff as well. I wanted to mention the tours that you gave, that you and your staff gave the board. It was great to get out there and see the schools and it wasn't great to see the damage, but it was good to have a sort of, a firsthand view of what that damage was. But what really struck me was Principal Verblau, when she was giving me a tour of Gulf Elementary, it was like she was giving me a tour of her home. Like that's how. Yeah, well, it's not just that she lives there, it's that's how much she loves it and how much pride she takes in it. it. So that was, I told her that during the, I told her that during the tour, and I'm not, I'm not sure I've said that about anybody other than an athletic director in our high schools. So I just thought that that was really cool. And I will be giving my very last elected versus appointed factual minute. Some people have asked me, why, if we elect our president and our Congress, why don't we also elect our superintendent? Well, your Congress passes laws, and your president is responsible for executing those laws, but they are not responsible for the day-to-day operations of government like a superintendent is. A more apt comparison, in my opinion, is to compare it to the city council slash city manager, or the county commission slash county manager model, where the council and the commission are elected, and they appoint highly qualified individuals to run the day-to-day operations of massive, incredibly complicated organizations. I mentioned earlier today that we are the largest food service organization in Olive Lee County. In addition to that, I believe we are the 19th largest transportation system in the country. You've all heard these numbers before, 13,000 employees, $2.4 billion budget, 103,000 students. We don't elect CEOs of private corporations. I'm not clear why we would even consider electing the CEO of a public education system. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for the minute. Did you have a question, Ms. Fisher? Next, I'm going to ask Ms. Kathleen Morgan.
I don't have any comments this evening, other than to thank my colleagues who are attending their last action meeting for their service over the last couple of years. Mary Fisher, I have developed a sensitivity for the health and welfare of, of students that I could not, that I certainly didn't have when I came on the board. And I, I appreciate your long service on the board and always keeping focus on the kids. To Ms. Gittens, I, I think of Ms. Gittens, and I think of Portables, but I also think of someone who has been an extraordinary advocate for her community and is, is very proactive and informed in terms of her community needs. And Ms. Vaughn, thank you particularly for your representation of the Hispanic community and your occasional remarks that make us flinch, but also keep us honest. So thanks to all of you. And I will echo a comment made earlier, which is that I hope you all, and I expect you all, will continue to participate in some form of public service. And I know that you will continue to be engaged with public education and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Chivinelli?
Thank you. I actually echo what Ms. Morgan said. In fact, I don't want to get emotional, but each, each board member that I've worked with here has a special place in my heart because I respect them, I respect them for their time, respect, respect them for their advocacy, for everything they've done, being an ally and sometimes being an opposition. I respect that, too. And I'm excited for them, for their next journey, what it would be. I have no doubt there will be advocacy continued, and I hope that it will be somewhat reflected here at the, at the district for the students, because their work has been well received for me, and, and I appreciate it and respect it completely. I, they will, every one of you will be missed regardless what your next adventure is. I hope that I'm involved as a friend later on, because I've, my friendship is, goes on beyond the dais for me. But I am excited for a new day on the dais and a new board. So I'm excited for that as well. And so I welcome whoever replaces these members. I did want to thank, or congratulate the new assistant principal for Gateway. I'm excited for you. Also, there is an open house at the Foundation for Lee County Schools for teachers and staff and for Saturday, 9:00 to 1:00. And it's at the Foundation, which is at 2266 Second Street Downtown, on, down by Jackson and Second. And also, oh, I just wanted to thank the Challenger Middle School for the cards and their, their appreciation for school to be back to normal and for their, their day-to-day to, to be learning, because they missed it. Some, we even made comments that they were bored at home. So I'm excited that they're happy to be back in school. And I think every day that we move forward, instead of looking backwards, will be a more normal day for each student and, as well as teachers and parents. And I think that's it. And then I look forward to seeing everybody next week, or Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chivinelli. Ms. Vaughn, please.
Thank you. Well, I am one of the three who will not be on this, this board after, well, after the 22nd. And I wanted to start out with a little bit of background and some thank yous. I was hired to teach in Lee County Schools 16 years ago.
Ms. Vaughn, is your mic on?
Try it again. I was hired to teach in Lee County Schools 16 years ago. My application included 30 years as a successful secondary classroom teacher that included roles in leadership, mentoring, writing district curriculum, and facilitating professional development. I had stellar recommendations and wide-ranging experience, and yet, only one Lee County principal interviewed me. And so my first thank you is to Mr. George Clover at Astero High School. Mr. Clover offered me a job at Astero High School before I even left his office that day. I worked with some extremely talented and gifted teachers at Astero, great staff during my eight years at Astero High School. And I just want to give a shout out to a few of them, to Melissa, Katrina, Bonnie, Jane, Norm, Sandy, Jen, Heather, and Rita. All of you made my time at Astero that much better than it, than it was. It was a great experience, and you were great, still are great friends. So why did I choose to run for school board after retiring, and I did retire from Astero High School, after 38 years of classroom teaching and at the age of 67? Actually, many of my friends, when I said what I intended to do, said, "Betsy, you're crazy." Could be. The fact is that there, as I was there at Astero, because of my wide-ranging experience, I had lots of very positive ideas on how to improve academics at, at the school. And in fact, there were a couple of things that I did talk to George Clover about that were, that were enacted at that time. And I decided that I was going to run. This is my sole reason, because I was totally fulfilled as a person with my years in the classroom. I felt that even though I was retiring from the classroom, I had more to give to the field of education, and that Lee County, from what I could see, really needed it at that time. So I came in third out of three, I'm sorry, third out of five primary candidates during my first run for school board in 2016. I decided to do it again two years later. Obviously, I won in 2018. And my next thank you is to the more than 124,000 Lee County voters from Alva to Benita Springs for your support. Many of those supporters expressed their disappointment this December when I announced my decision not to run for a second term. Now, for others, my decision not to seek reelection has probably been the only thing that's made them happy during the last several years. Take where you can get it. I went back, a while back, looking at the materials I had for my campaign, and I pretty much remembered what the most important things were. And going back, all the way back to 2016, probably 2015, when I started the journey, was an issue that now I'm, I'm feeling really, really good about. Ms. Dr. Bernier just mentioned it, top of my list, proximity schools. True neighborhood schools are not viable in the school district of, of Lee County. I'm not going to have time to go into that. Why, however, the proposed proximity schools for grades K through 8 will resolve two of the issues that really concern me the most. First is what was just talked about. The time, that is, the time that kids have to spend on a bus, driving sometimes up to an hour and a half, which was a shocking piece of information the first time I heard it, and the money that, that we save, and especially during this time when it's so difficult to get bus drivers. The other thing is, we won't have true neighborhood feeder schools, but bringing the schools in closer to the neighborhood not only makes the schools more accessible for the families and brings that kind of ownership to the families of a nearby school, but there's benefit to the teachers. And this is something else that bothered me when I was at Astero High School, because I was used to lots of vertical teaming, vertical planning, that I did not see happening during that time. So I'm hoping that this is another improvement with academic services. Another thing that I've talked about numerous times, more resources and emphasis on our advanced classes, both the pre-advanced classes, I'm talking about AP, ACE, and IB, as well as the high school classes, as well as, and this is something I had talked to Dr. Spiro about years ago when I was on curriculum advisory, I think my first year on the board, mandatory special training for our teachers who are teaching these advanced courses for the first time. Extremely important in delivery of information to our students. Expanded and improved early childhood education. Honestly, I had no idea about this when I first started to run for school board. But back in around 2015, as I was exploring things in the district, I toured a couple, a couple daycare centers and, including the Early Learning Center. And I think Ms. Maggie Stevens was, I'm seeing a nod, directing that at the time. And Mrs. Stevens was a godsend with my education on this. And I spent a lot of time after that studying, reading up, because remember, I taught the big kids in high school, not the little kids. And it has, it made me such a believer in this initiative, this part of our strategic plan, going back to, it was important to Dr. Atkins as well. I, of course, I don't, I'm not going to get into the whys on it, but lots and lots of reasons going all the way through better chances at high school graduation. To be honest, when I first studied way back, probably 2015 or so, high school graduation rates, I was appalled. I was appalled, and I was especially appalled at the graduation rates for our English language learners and our students of color. I'm so happy and so proud of this district for year by year raising all the graduation levels. And I, I think the most profound difference is with those, the students that I, that I mentioned. Do I want to go? Okay, I'm going to go to this area next. Yeah, there have been a couple disappointments. One of my big disappointments, and I've been talking about this periodically, teachers still lack meaningful input into site-based decision-making. I think that's, we may have some principals that use that. I've talked about it enough over the past several years. This is, we are missing the boat by not using the knowledge, skills, and expertise of our children, of our teachers in every single school. Do my other disappointment in a minute. I told you earlier why I ran for school board, and now I'm going to tell you why I did not, was not part of my reason. I didn't run for a seat on the board with any political agenda of my own, despite the scoffing of some of you out there, thinking that some of the things that I have said come from either a sense of political ideology from me, or from somewhere else, like from a political party. Absolutely not. It just happens like some of you have deep-felt feelings about wearing masks or not wearing masks, LGBTQ community, and all those things. To me, that's ideology. And those of you who say that ideology has no place in the school, and yet you're looking forward to, as some of you have said either tonight or earlier, "I'm looking forward to bringing more conservative you," I'm sorry, that's ideology. And that's fine. That's fine. But please understand, no sense of my own political agenda. I was not endorsed by or following, nor did I get any money ever from political PACs, or never did I have political parties send out campaign material. That's never been a part of me. This is not a stepping stone to perhaps getting in good with a certain party and, you know, moving on up to a higher elected position. I haven't used my time on the board ever, ever, to secure favors for friends, relatives, or vendors. I've never used it this time to manipulate people to my own will. That's not part of who I am. I've always told the truth. You may not have liked my truth, but tonight I brought out my little Pinocchio. And I know my nose isn't real small. Some of you probably noted that when you said, "Oh, well, she was never a prom princess." But anyway, Pinocchio's been a bit of a bad boy there, but he's a good reminder about truth and the importance of truth. And again, you may not like my truth, but my truth is the same here as it is when I go to speak to other people. It doesn't change. It is my truth. I didn't need to be on the board, or on this dais, to raise my sense of I didn't need to be on the board or on this dais to raise my sense of self-worth or feel power. I had the power. I had the greatest power ever through the thousands of students that I taught over 38 years. And I still hear from many of my kids, my kids who are now, some of them grandparents in their 50s. Finally, a disappointment, and then I have one, I'm going to end on a very positive note. One of the things that I campaigned on, and I, this phrase came to me one time when I was, when I was addressing primarily minority audience. And I said, "One thing is, I want to see that this ain't," I said, "this ain't your grandpa's Lee County anymore." And yeah, this English teacher used "ain't" because it just seemed like something better to use instead of "this is not." But "this ain't your grandpa's." Well, I don't feel like I've made any progress in this. And as a matter of fact, maybe some parts of Lee County is turning into great-grandpas' or great-great-grandpas' Lee County. And that's not something political I'm saying. This is something that goes to the history of this county. And that was one other thing that I was shocked about 17 years ago when I moved here, when I realized the history of desegregation in this district. And no, I'm not going away. I'm going to have different areas that I move to, although I will keep an eye on what's going on, including single-member districts for all seven seats when that comes up in January. But it's a huge disappointment to me. My optimism comes from, I think Ms. McGill said something about leaving the board in, leaving the district, rather, in good hands. Very happy thus far with Dr. Christopher Bernier and what he's done. He has brought, I think, some very meaningful changes to the organization of this school district. He has, I'm not hearing the words, another phrase I hate, "Well, we've always done it this way." Oh, let's ban that. And I think it is banned right now. He has made strides in, for instance, when Mr. Michael Ramirez was hired, I was so happy to see that we had a high-ranking Hispanic heritage person as an administrator. Years ago, when I asked about, you know, "Well, what about, you know, we have more Hispanics as minorities in this county?" "Oh, well, yes, we have representation in our personnel with lots of Hispanics." And I said, "But how many of them are administrative? How many of them are spout?" Not there's anything wrong with spout, but how many? And I am hoping that a door is open and that, you know, we have someone who is obviously very fluent in Spanish that can help with that. Finally, again, I feel good about Dr. Bernier's leadership, and I have only best wishes for this county and these children. I have a lot more I could say about my experiences on this board. This is not the time or the place. Stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Gittens, please.
Okay, thank you. Because this is the last action meeting that I will be at, and I know that in the future the board is going to be recognizing, I'm sure, many of the community leaders and organizations that had a lot to do with helping us get the schools back in order and feeding people and all of the things they did in the community. But I specifically wanted to recognize a team that helped with our staff, that did the clothing boutique team from South Fort Myers High School, and all the other groups and people, I'm sure you will be recognized, but I wanted to be able to do this one because personally I saw the work that was done. And I believe one person that was on that team is here that helped us out. So I will read a part of the letter to them, and I would like to present the letter to the one person that is here. And I basically said, "We all want to believe there's good in our world and community. When fellow human beings are in need, it provides the greatest opportunity to show what good is all about. Many individuals and organizations came together to do good for others after Hurricane Ian and continue to do so." I just wanted to take this opportunity to show, to say thank you for the showing of, showing and sharing the good in our community, the participation in the Lee County Schools' clothing boutique. Thank you to South Fort Myers Clothing Boutique Team, and that was Mary Jo Potter, it was her brainchild, Olivia Moses, Jen Selick, Andrea Gonzalez, and then the next part, thank you to Chico's and the Art of Fashion and More for donating thousands of dollars of clothing. And when I say thousands of dollars of clothing, I mean thousands of dollars of clothing. The village came together, used their abilities to give our community something good to remember, and they gave dignity back to many of our staff members that were able to go back to school dressed in a dignified and way that they were proud to do so. So before I finish what I have to say, I'm going to take the liberty to ask Ms. Moore to please come forward, and I will give her her letter. And if there's anyone else, I don't think anyone else is here. You can see how she's dressed. She has to pause. Thank you. And she's coming back, so you may want to shout. And thank you for allowing me to do that. The next part of what I have to say, the lighthouse that's sitting there, I put it up there when I first raised my right hand and said that I would abide by all the laws and be a good board member. And I said, "As long as I was here, the lighthouse would be there," because it represents reminders that we are here to be a light, to be an inspiration, to be an example to others, and that everything we do and say, we have to remember someone is watching and learning from the way that we say it. A couple, one kind of business thing, the calendar committee, I want to say this before I read the rest of it. Our calendar committee met last Thursday, and after three hours, and actually, it was very enjoyable. I mean, you think three hours was going to be really, really bad, but it went very smoothly. We got a lot accomplished. I really liked the way that everybody listened to everyone else and suggestions and all of that, and we worked through very well. We came to a consensus on the 2023 and 24 instructional calendars. Talke and Spout community members were present, and I was the, excuse me, the board liaison. We discussed hurricane make-up days and spring break, winter break, and the last few days of school. The board will be voting on the calendar in a coming meeting. And I will say, I know there was a desire for us to have our spring break at the same time coinciding with other counties like Collier, because we do have people that work here and have children there and vice versa. And it just was a little bit too difficult to accomplish for the 23 calendar, but is well on the top of the list for 2024. So I just wanted to give you that update. When I talk about my time on the board, I feel that I have fulfilled the goal of the lighthouse to be an example, and I have been, you may disagree, but I have been fiscally responsible. I have kept children first. I've provided oversight. I've asked questions, I know sometimes too many, but I've offered solutions as well. I've supported schools, teachers, staff, district staff, more than some of them even know. And I spoke up for issues and needs that at times other people would not speak up for. But hopefully, everyone learned from me bringing those issues forward. And you've also learned that with me, if you hear me the first two times, I don't have to repeat it and keep pounding it. So some of the issues that I did keep bringing forward, there was a need to do that, and so I kept bringing it forward. Let's see, okay. So now, my African attire. I want to give kudos to this board, to my team members, because of the growth that we have done. And why do I say growth? Because in 2019, I sat in this very seat, dressed in African attire, and it was, I thought the sky was falling. Everybody was so upset that I was wearing, and I quote, "a costume." And the rest of the board had not been informed that I was going to wear a costume. I wore African attire during Black History Month. There were people in the audience that wore the same, and we took pictures. And after the meeting, we still had the plus deltas in the back room, and the whole topic was me wearing this costume. But I say hats off to you because you have understood it's not a costume. It's my heritage. When I talk about exposing people to learn about other cultures, this is cultural awareness, to understand that me representing something in my culture, that there's nothing wrong with it, that that's what we're all about, that we have students out there that represent this same culture. So thank you for the growth. I am proud of my culture, and I'm proud of you recognizing, recognizing and accepting difference in the Lee County area. I'm still available if you need to learn any other cultural things like how to cook collard greens and stuff. The next topic is on communication. Communication is one of the biggest issues in this district and how we effectively share information with all stakeholders. It has been something that I have pounded on and talked about from the time I sat down here, even during the time that I was chair. I think we need to lead by example and communicate in a more inclusive and simplistic manner. Now, that does not mean to demean the education or the thought process of anyone in this district, but it means to understand that any language or any culture needs to be included. And I've mentioned it before, that sometimes when we speak at a level up here to, for whatever reason, think about when it has to be translated. And I've given you the example, when we had COVID issues, and they had to choose between the four different processes. And I spent two hours one Saturday afternoon on a Zoom call with five Hispanic ladies that were kind of like the leaders of their community. They were the ones that the other parents came to, to ask, "What does this mean? What do we have to do?" And they didn't understand how to translate it. We have to understand when we translate that there are nuances that don't translate well. So if we start out at a seventh-grade level, it's much easier for everyone to understand what we're trying to say and to get that communication out. Whether you're white, black, Latino, Haitian, all cultures are represented in Lee County and need to be on a level playing field. That is true opportunity. Now, some people will say, they'll look at me, or they'll talk about someone that doesn't look like them, and they'll say, "I don't see color." However, every culture wants you to see them. And I just paused for a minute to let that marinate. I'm not getting into a racial discussion. I am trying to help you understand. People want you to see them for who they are, what they represent, their unique contribution to our community and to our society. I mean, where would we be without peas and rice, or collard greens, or pickly, or Taco Tuesday? We are a diverse community, and people want you to see their diversity and understand, just like my colleagues understood why I felt it necessary to represent my culture with my attire. Thank you for working with me to create a whole new lane. And no, I'm not going to say the comment, but thank you for helping me create a whole new lane that is inclusive, that is innovative, that is wide enough for all cultures and all dreams of everyone, wide enough for us all. Thank you for all of those. Thank you to all who saw, who saw me supported, supported me and the issues that I found very important. Thank you to those who agreed with me and those who disagreed with me. I learned from you, and you learned from me. Thank you for those who worked with me. I want to thank my husband and my friends, especially Julen and Butch. We will now be able to have dinner or lunch or go out and not talk about the school board, but we probably will still. And to close, a couple weeks ago, I was asked to do innovation, and I wrote a reading about the fruit of the spirit. There is so much anger and hatred in our world right now. And I think about the lighthouse, that's what we're showing children, that this is how you get along, that you disagree and you become disagreeable. And I thought, "I've been told more than you want to know. Well, you know, you did a really good job, and you really fought a good fight, but you were just not a conservative Christian. If you had just been a conservative Christian, because we really didn't like what you did." So I thought about it, and I was sitting in church one day, yes, I am a Christian, and more conservative than some people think. And the sermon was about the fruit of the spirit, and I kept saying to myself, people that come to me and talk about And I kept saying to myself, people that come to me and talk about being a Christian, "And the Bible says, 'By their fruit you shall know them.'" And I sat down and I wrote this. So I will read it to you as my final words. And I am going to donate a copy of this in a frame, and I would hope to go into each office for all of the board members, to stay there for whatever board member is in that office, to remind them, "By their fruit you shall know them." Love, I pray that we love what we do, do what we love, and love our neighbor. Joy, I pray for happiness from the heart and commitment to helping others be happy. Peace, I pray we search fervently for ways to agree with each other. Patience, I pray we can hold our tongues, empathize, and try to understand those that don't look or think like us. Kindness, I pray we simply acknowledge that kindness means giving up of self, giving your best to others. Goodness, I pray we learn to define good as a global term, not just our individual beliefs. There is good in everyone. Faithfulness, I pray we are faithful, honest, and true, to do what is best for the whole, not just ourselves, not just our own. Gentleness, I pray we learn to work gently with others, listening and understanding before judging. Self-control, I pray we live like the camera is always on and the mic is always live. Someone is always watching and learning from you. Lord, I pray you recognize us by our fruit. Self-control, gentleness, faithfulness, goodness, kindness, patience, peace, joy, and love. And the greatest of these is love. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Fisher, please.
Thank you. So I came to Lee County in 1977 and took a job with the district in 1979. And for the past...
Say the first year again? No, being serious.
Oh, 1977. I came to Lee County.
Okay.
I live in the Cape. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve for three terms on the Lee County School Board. As a board member, I recognized our diverse community, the strengths and weaknesses, the opportunities, the awesome kids, the wonderful workers, and my colleagues on the board. Thank you for letting me serve with you these last years. It's been an adventure. The whole thing has been an adventure. As a board member, I worked to promote student growth and achievement, employee satisfaction by working with the board colleagues, to practice effective school board governance, which FSBA told us we should do, communication, and advocating for students while engaging the community, as well as staying focused on our goals and the reason that we were here. As a staff member, I took a lot of pleasure in contributing to an environment that celebrates youth and creates long-lasting bonds between people. I worked at five elementary schools, a high school, student services, did the crisis team, worked for the Bridges Grant, which was sometime back in the 80s. And it's just been wonderful. Over the years, we've experienced many changes and challenges, most recently, a pandemic and a devastating Hurricane Ivan. Through it all, I've noticed the real heroes, our people who go above and beyond to provide the best possible safe and quality educational environment while dealing with unprecedented situations, like our new superintendent. My life has been enriched by the people I served, community members, students, families, fellow educators. So now, leaving behind memories and facing opportunities for new experiences, I offer my gratitude and an affirmation of my commitment for continuing support as we move forward, working to heal and rebuild, preparing tomorrow's workforce, and strengthening the economy of our community. The dedication, I really want to give a special thank you to the people that I've had the opportunity to work with. Their dedication to serving students, their honesty, their commitment to excellence drives the community, building what makes our district unique. Fellow staff members have inspired, mentored, and uplifted me, as well as the students we served. They remain the primary reason why I know Lee County Schools will continue to work to fulfill its mission and vision. They say children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. That is ever so true. Two things that I feel like I have done, my motto was connecting school, family, and community, and it was my hope to make a difference. I have, for the past 11 or 12 years, advocated for comprehensive health education and dealing with the whole child, social and emotional wellness, as well as academic achievement and success. Communities like ours work best as a team and can't be upheld without shared accountability. It was my hope to make a difference, and I hope that I have. Thank you.
Thank. Go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
I just wanted to say thank you to Renee from Cape Coral High School for being here tonight as our student representative and for being part of the Student Advisory Committee. And I hope I'll be able to come and visit that meeting from time to time. And also to the South Fort Myers Jazz Band, under the direction of Tyler Crainer. That was excellent. So thank you. And the other thing is, if you haven't already, please remember to vote. Let your voice be heard.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And Ms. Renee, I'm coming to you next, and you pushed that button.
So I just wanted to start off by saying how grateful I am to be able to be here, sitting alongside such like strong-willed, innovative people, just hearing everyone speak and dealing with the public. I mean, I feel like I've learned a lot, just hearing everything. But yeah, I apologize if I seem a little unorganized. I just took the ACT today. So.
Oh, yay!
Yeah. But I am an IB junior at Cape Coral High School. And actually, our IB program there for juniors, our class is like 70 people. So that's kind of who I spend my day to day on. So just thinking about being like a district representative, you know, I am in high school. I'm an only child, so I don't really deal with elementary school kids or middle school kids, unfortunately, you know? But I mean, I have talked to people, obviously, and just some of the issues that I've also shared, that I share, that what I've always heard, is kind of with, you know, obviously, there's been COVID and the hurricane. You know, my freshman year was all online, and now we kind of got a year back of normalcy. And then the hurricane hit, and we lost a month of school, you know? And so I'm taking a lot of like AP classes and IB classes, and a lot of my friends are too. And those dates are already set nationally, sometimes even worldwide. So a lot of my friends are kind of concerned, like, are we going to be able to learn everything in time in order to take those tests? And obviously, that's not up to the district. I just wanted to kind of share that concern, because, you know, I mean, I guess there's not too much you can do about it. But, and also, I kind of just wanted to bring up something a little more positive that I've had the privilege of being involved in in my school. We have a club slash organization called the Dignity Closet. It's located in our school. I'm actually the vice president of it. It was started a handful of years ago. But basically, it's a closet, it's a storage room, but within that is a closet full of clothes that people have donated. And I mean, it's really overfilling now, which is, I mean, amazing. But yeah, we have that, basically, anyone in our school can come and take the clothes if they need. It's all anonymous and through guidance counselors. But especially after the hurricane, I just really want to make that aware, not only to the students in our school, because I feel like not a lot of people know about it, and I always try to promote it, but obviously, you know, this can't talk to 2,000 kids. But I also kind of wanted to share this idea, just the whole districts, because I'm really passionate about the idea. I think it's great that they have this resource. And I mean, like I said, especially after the hurricane, a lot of kids need clothes, and we're doing a school supplies drive. And I just want this to kind of be like a universal thing that people do, where kids can help other kids. And I mean, we had a homecoming drive. So last Friday, a bunch of people came in and donated from boutiques, like new dresses and clothes and formal wear that a lot of people don't have or can't afford right now. And I know homecoming isn't the most important thing right now, but it's, for some people, it is, you know, to get people back to normalcy. So I just thought I'd share that club that we have within our school, and I hope that other schools can take that idea, it wasn't my idea, but that someone could take that idea and really just build it to be a more common thing within schools. So I didn't really have too many reports, I guess, but that was just something I was doing today after school, after my ACT test. And I just thought it was really great, getting all these donations and being able to help people. So thank you.
Well, Renee, I want to thank you so much. And the Dignity Closet sounds great, and we do have, several of our schools do have such things. Middle schools do, but we can certainly help you get the word out, too. And as far as supplies, school supplies, I have an office full, so I can help you with that. So we do have a lot of community engagement. And right now, as you know, you said you're overflowing, so we have means of assisting you as well. So just, so you know that. And for my comments, I just would like to say it has, because this is my last meeting as the chair, so I would just like to say it has been an honor and a privilege serving as the board chair for the past two years. Together, we have gone through so much, COVID, and choosing an interim superintendent, thank you, Dr. Savage, and then choosing and hiring of Dr. Bernier as our superintendent. Thank you. We have all brought our uniqueness and talents to this board of four years, and through this, I have continued to learn and grow by the talented leadership of this governance team, Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Gittens, your devotion to education, community, and children, as well as you, Ms. Fisher, and your heart for children, and keeping us positive. Thank you. Together, we have accomplished much, and the future of the district is bright now and for years to come. And I look forward, as we move forward, to the upcoming year, because I plan on being right here. So as we proceed, that is my comments for now. I really appreciate South Fort Myers High School Jazz Band. They were great. The kids were all a little bit stressed out, but they still did a fabulous job, and I really appreciate them being here. And from there, I'm going to move on to Mr. Prejean Bruno for any comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have, I've been through a couple of superintendents, but these seven have been the same board members during my entire tenure. So I have just a few words. Ms. Vaughn, you have always kept us honest and challenged our thoughts. You made us laugh, especially when you took us to Texas. I remember a bat story in particular. You reminded us of the diversity of our student population and always contributed to the discussion with your significant experience and educational background. Enlightening. Mrs. Gittens, thank you for your advocacy and representing the underrepresented. You've never forgotten the students of each zone and all students in the district by advocating the needs and making sure that parents and the students' voices were heard. You exposed us to new thoughts and ideas and the power of communication when it is used well. Ms. Fisher, as my first chair, I will not forget our numerous discussions. We truly believe in this district's ability to be a world-class school system and for each student to reach his or her highest personal potential. We believe in the utilization of collaboration and mediation and problem solving, remembering always why we are here, keeping the students, the entire student, in front and center. You have lifted your district and your colleagues and our students. Thank you for always having your door open to me and guiding me when I was first appointed to the board, and even currently. And you know, I'm a lawyer, so I have to say this. Board Policy 1.06 designates the Lee County School Board philosophy, which is to lead with vision by keeping the focus on the future rather than the past or the present. The policy offers specifics, such as empowering through processes, encouraging and listening for diversity in the views of all in the community, as well as leading strategically. Ms. Fisher, Ms. Vaughn, and Mrs. Gittens, you have accomplished this. It has been a pleasure to serve you as your board attorney. I thank you for having faith, along with the rest of your colleagues on this board, and in pointing me to this position. I have learned and grown from each of you, have grown and learned from each of you. Thank you. I know you have more to give, and I look forward to seeing your next chapter and the great things to come. Thank you for your service to the School District of Lee County.
Thank you, Mr. Prejean Bruno. Dr. Bernier, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I do have a couple of items before I talk directly to the three board members that we know. This will be their last official meeting, Willis. I wanted to provide the state some information regarding the state instructional review visits. As you know, the Bureau of School Improvement works collaboratively with academic services and school leadership to support three schools that earned a D grade this past year. These schools fall under umbrella of comprehensive support and improvement, Tier One, which means they will receive monthly state visits and participate in instructional reviews. The focus on the standards-based instruction and effective pedagogy at Manatee, G. Weaver Hips, Fort Myers Middle Academy, and the focus will be on resulting in improved student outcomes. That first instructional review will occur this week, with visits to Fort Myers Middle on Wednesday, G. Weaver Hips on Thursday, and Manatee Elementary School on Friday. Representatives from academic services and school leadership teams will participate with the state in these instructional reviews. Academic services will support school leadership in implementing action plans developed after these instructional reviews, and we plan to bring this to a future workshop for you so you can understand more about the accountability process as it currently exists within the state of Florida. Just a quick question, just some quick reports on NAEP. We did get the National Assessment of Educational Progress results. Those are nationwide results. The School District of Lee County does not get individual report on its own student data. What is done is across the entire country, certain grade levels are selected to participate in the NAEP exam, and they give you an idea of how the nation is doing according to standards. We don't have any comparable data with Lee County, but I can share with you that the state scores in Florida, like most states, did show a regression based upon the COVID time, where some states were out longer. I will tell you that Florida has one area of which it could be proud of, and that is the average score rating and reading for grade four from 2019 to 2022, which places Florida, sorry, I'm reading from my notes, which places Florida as within the top four amongst all the states in ELA in math, in that grade level. So there is some good news to say that some of what you did as a state... So, there is some good news to say that some of what you did as a state, unlike where I was currently, where I was located during the pandemic, the idea of reopening, while there was great angst about it, may have helped, especially with our younger children. So, I wanted to take an opportunity to recognize that. I want to just quickly put something together for Renee. There was an email that I came across today that was buried in a folder called Nice Notes, and it was from an educator who, post-storm, didn't know how she was going to tackle her house. And she called her principal, and they mobilized a team to come and help her. And she, within a very short period of time, knowing that she had no physical means or manner to get her house cleaned out, between the athletes and the other student government representatives and people like yourselves who showed up, she resorted to this at the bottom of the statement. She said, "When people talk about these kids today, let me tell you how amazing these kids today are." Renee, you are an example of that. You are an example of what we do, what your family has done for you in helping to raise you to this point, but you are definitely spreading your wings in your own leadership. The ACT is just a big reading test. Congratulations on completing that, but I do want to address your concern. Dr. Spiro couldn't be here this evening, but I know Dr. Cupid McCoy and Mr. Spiro are receiving input from IB, AP, SAT. They realize there was a hurricane in Lee County, and they are already working with additional time so that you and your friends and your fellow colleagues in school can have some of that additional time that you think you might be missing. So, stay tuned. We're still working with those organizations to try to move some of those deadlines around on your behalf. We don't know that we'll be able to move all of them, but we're going to ask for all and take what we get. So, stay tuned. We'll try to give you some more information on that. To the board, I'd like to thank you as a whole body tonight for providing the first evaluation of this superintendent. I appreciate the comments and am working very hard to digest all the feedback you provided. The scores are the scores, but I will tell you what you wrote to me is what the most important factors I have to consider, because I can take evaluations for my entire career of 37 years as an educator, and I can get a needs-effective or highly effective, it's in the comments of what that I'm doing is working on your behalf and what I need to continue to try to develop. So, I appreciate that, and will continue to digest those and have individual conversations with you moving forward. Would like to recognize Gulf Elementary School, who sent me a set of cards. The superintendent is turning into quite a crybaby at home, so I was glad I read those privately. I also want to reiterate from the presentation earlier today, earlier this evening, I want to make sure that the community knows that we are connecting with those students and those families in the North Fort Myers shelter. Finally, when we talk about school safety and other things, I think it's really important that we continue to look at this as a cycle and a flow related to how people are going to go through this process. I believe, to some extent, for those who have been back for a while, for students and faculty combined, some of the honeymoon of coming back to school and kind of forgetting the pressures they've been under is starting to wear off. I want our students to know that there are multiple resources in the school building for them. The last thing I would want a student to do is to make a permanent decision about a temporary problem. So, I want to encourage Renee and other students who may be listening tonight to understand that their counselors and additional mental health supports are available in this district, and if you needed emergency, 1-800-273-TALK, which is 8255, 1-800-273-8255. That is the National Suicide Hotline, and I think every student ought to have that. And I want us to, again, and our students are very aware and are very good about supporting each other. The other thing I have been able to provide this evening is just a quick update on a couple of things related to our schools. Some of you mentioned them, but I think their names deserve to be in print and on television. Our first set of schools are the students, are the schools that receive Florida recognition dollars. These are schools that either maintain or improve their grade level. The total amount awarded from the state of Florida to our schools, which now will be a joint decision between the SAC and their faculties, was $3,647,793, which does include 10 of our charter schools as well, that I did not list here for sake of space. But these schools, in the midst of this post-pandemic world and our current hurricane situation, have additional work ahead of themselves related to what and how to use that school recognition dollars in concert with their SACs and their faculties. Additionally, we recognized earlier today the Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports, the PBIS Model Schools. If you want a simple digestion of what this is, our Code of Conduct is multiple millions of pages long. PBIS gives students about four to five reasons for how to behave: integrity, respect, being on time. If you do those things every day, you don't have to worry about what's in our Code of Conduct, because you will conduct yourselves in a manner that's aligned with what makes great young people into great leaders. So, I listed the bronze and the silver divisions. I also will provide you the gold and the platinum divisions. Clearly, as the medal rises, so does the level of support and the quality of these programs. But all's programs deserve to be recognized because they are working hard in order to accomplish what needs to be a more simplified approach to how to behave versus a list of things about how not to behave. So, again, we also have district distinguished schools. These are schools that are still working towards implementing a full PBIS program. They are supported here at the district level, and that is a pretty extensive list of our school buildings that are heavily involved in making sure we're teaching children the right way to behave versus just focusing on all the rules. Finally, in closing tonight, I did not prepare the same remarks that Kathy DePuy Bruno did. I would like to say to Ms. Fisher, it's been a pleasure to sit next to you. We joke about she kicks me. She really does not, but she has been a fabulous board member to work with and a strong advocate for all children. The other aspect of this is, Mrs. Gittens, you have always been available, and I've always appreciated in the course of our one-on-ones, the history lessons that I get related to when I wasn't here and what transpired. And Ms. Vaughn, once I figured out when the best time was to call you, we began to hit it off, and I've always appreciated your honesty. I think you, some people would probably say that you don't have a filter. I've appreciated that, especially in the one-on-ones, because it gives me very clear direction and a way to move forward. I would close by saying that you hired me, and I'm glad to be here, but I will tell you that you are representative of the core values of this organization. And I think the most, I think I can see in all of you is a commitment to excellence, that you have integrity, that you believe in so many other values, but at the very core of your belief is the belief in students. And when difficult decisions have to be made, you want to do what's best for children. That's true of this entire board, but to the outgoing members, I appreciate that. I look forward to seeing you on the 15th, when we do our reception regarding being able to say goodbye. And in the meantime, I'll save my personal, more personal comments for a more private environment, because all of you have had an impact. But to our three board members that we know are leaving, really appreciate your help and support and your guidance for a new superintendent. It's been invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. The next scheduled meeting of the board, on Friday, November the 4th, there will be a board special meeting at 2:00 PM. On Tuesday, November 15th, there will be a pre-org workshop at 10:00 AM. On Wednesday, November 16th, there will be a board workshop at 12:00 PM. And on Tuesday, November the 22nd, there will be a board action meeting at 6:00 PM. See you, no other business to come before this, yes?
I just have one last thing to do, please.
Ms. Gittens, please.
I'd like superintendent, so that it doesn't get forgotten ever.
Oh. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Okay. Now, at this point, at this point, see you, no other business to come before this body and see you, no objections, right? Okay. This meeting is adjourned, and the time is 8:34. Thank you so much. Have a great evening. I appreciate it.